Welcome to the March 20th, 2018 Yukon City Council and Yukon Municipal Authority Meetings in the Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. This evening, our invocation will be given by Councilman John Alberts, and following the invocation, we will have the flag salute.
Bow your heads, please.
Dear Lord, we ask that as we gather this evening to work for the city and the citizens, that you would be with us and bless us and guide us, Lord, that the decisions that we make might glorify you and bring prosperity and unity to our community, Lord. We ask that you put your hands on our community, the United States and the world, and just breathe life into it, Lord, and breathe love, that we might learn to live and love and to benefit each other. In Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
McCarron?
Here.
Smystrela?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Alberts?
Here.
Yonda?
Here.
Presentations and proclamations.
Done this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. This section of the proceedings is for our visitors who would like to address the City Council on a non-agended item. Do we have anyone here this evening who wishes to address the council? Seeing none, we will now recess as the Yukon City Council and convene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can approve those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all of the authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The City Manager recommends a motion to approve: A) The minutes of the regular meeting of March 6, 2018; B) Payment of material claims in the amount of $34,126.06. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Item 2A, considering accepting the 10th Street Limited Water Tower Lease Proposal from Integris Health in the amount of $75,000 for a 10-year period. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Item 3A, consider rejecting all proposals for the Frisco Road Limited Water Tower Lease. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
On the discussion, Mr. Crosby, you want to comment on that, please? Did we just not get a good bids?
Yes. We had one bid that came in on this particular item. It was only for $25,000. I did talk with the individuals that put this, and they asked me what we were looking for, and I told them that we're looking for a proposal on this particular tower for what's going to happen in that area. I think we can get a minimum of $50,000 or more, and they said they would consider that and get back with me if they'd like to rebid it. But I really don't think at $25,000 for 10 years, that's very cheap. You know, you couldn't, that's the cost of one of those big signs on the highway for a year, so they're going to reconsider that.
Any other discussion?
Jim, when they do that, does the cost of lettering the water tower included in that price, or do we, does the city?
No, they have to do their own, pay for that themselves, and that depends on this, when individual was thinking about doing it previously, and when the water tower, before they even raised it, it'd been a lot cheaper on the ground than once you have to hang from the top, and the bid was about $25,000 to $30,000. And that was one side, that wasn't double-sided, like Integris does. So you can imagine that, when they do their tower, it has two faces that they do on that one tower.
One tower, yeah, 10th Street. Okay? Any more discussion? Vote, please.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
We will now adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1 on the consent, is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. City Manager recommends a motion that will approve: The minutes of the regular meeting of March 6, 2018; Payment of, B) Payment of material claims in the amount of $695,295.49; C) Designating the items on attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade; D) Granting Oklahoma Gas and Electric, O-G-and-E, a five-foot utility easement to install a new electric line to an existing light pole located at the Jackie Cooper Gym, 1024 East Main; E) An agreement with the Yukon Optimist Sports Club for the use of the City Park Baseball Field from February 21, 2018 to February 21, 2019; F) An agreement with the Yukon Horseshoe Club for the use of the City Park Horseshoe Courts from February 21, 2018 to October 30 of 2018; G) An agreement with the Yukon Christian Athletic Association for the use of Hillcrest Softball Field from February 21, 2018 through October 30, 2018; H) An item, or excuse me, an agreement with the United Softball Association of Yukon for use of Sunrise Ball, Sunrise Park Softball Fields from February 21, 2018 through October 30, 2018; I) An agreement with the Oklahoma Nitro Club to use Taylor Park RC Car Track from February 21, 2018 through February 21, 2019; Item J) An agreement with the Yukon BMX to use Taylor Park BMX Track from February 21, 2018 through February 21, 2019; Item K) An agreement with the Yukon Soccer Club for the use of soccer fields at Ranchwood and Taylor Parks from February 21, 2018 through February 21 of 2019; And Item L) Setting the date for the next regular council meeting for April 3, 2018, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I, do we need to amend this because we have, I think, three of these in here where it is a one-year full contract plus a day? So is that our?
Mr. Mayor, under the circumstances, there's no financial obligation by the city in any of these contracts. It is just to use property that the city owns, so therefore, we won't have to worry about going up to June 30 and renewing on July 1. We're okay in these contracts.
No, sir, I was saying that these, you know, when it says February 21, 2018 through February 21 of 2019, that's one year plus a day.
Yes, sir.
But since there is no financial obligation there, then we're okay doing that.
The city has no financial obligation, there's no money budgeted for any of these, so we're okay.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Okay? Vote, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Item 2, reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. Mr. Crosby, any reports this evening?
No reports this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item 3, consider approving the specifications and authorizing the purchasing agent to solicit proposals for copier services for physical year 2018, 2019. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote, please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item 4, consider awarding the contract for the Year 16 CDBG Small Cities Set Aside Concrete Roadway Replacement Improvement Project, City of Yukon, Oklahoma, to Bishop Construction LLC in the amount of $167,485, as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item 5, consider approving Ordinance 1355, an ordinance providing for the amendment to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, that will provide necessary medical emergency service to all citizens of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion, please, Richard?
Yes, we need to make an addition here to Part 2 of this, the living units. It states, "Shall mean a residential unit providing complete independent living facilities for a family, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation." Now, we need to add this to the end of it. This shall include all levels of nursing home care, including senior services, assisted living, and nursing home services. That's Part 2, Section 3064.
And that is an amendment?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other?
Just to be clear, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Russell, you're amending your original motion to include that language?
Yes.
Well, that was going to come here. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we need to vote? Okay, John?
Are we voting on the amendment or the item?
You have to vote on the amendment first.
Okay, because I want some discussion on the item.
All right.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
All right. So we're going to go ahead and vote for the, vote on the amendment as an addition to the original.
Do we get a second, Doug?
Second.
We have a second.
Okay. Vote, please, on the amendment.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Okay, going back now on Item 5 itself, we have a motion and a second on the original motion, so we're back to discussion. Mr. Alberts?
I just would like to cover some points. Mr. Crosby, I don't, do you want to answer the questions, or?
Depends on the question.
Okay.
I'll try.
So first of all, there's been some discussion of whether you have health insurance, whether you would need to participate. Would you opt out if you have health insurance, or, and I understand it's an individual preference, but what?
All right, if you have health insurance, and it depends on your policy, they're all different, they will just pay normally a portion of your medical bill, your ambulance bill. The rest of that portion is up to you to pay. So, yes, you would need this, even if you have health insurance, you would need this as a supplement, no? Is that not correct?
Yeah, we have.
Jason.
Jason here from Samaritan.
With Samaritan?
Sure, go ahead.
And that, approximately, what does that run for that?
It's difficult to answer, sir, and the reason it's difficult to answer is because there's so many different insurance products that are out there. But the, what my recommendation would be, and again, to Counselor Albert's point, it's a personal preference, but certainly, you know, there's out-of-pocket expense involved with pretty much all insurance types with the exception of Medicaid.
And I don't disagree. You know, everything on the internet's true, and I saw some discussion on the internet about this, where it said, well, if you have health insurance, that you don't need it. And I would tell you that in December, my lovely wife, gravity got a hold of her and yanked her to the ground, and she broke her shoulder. She had a one-mile IMSA ride, cost $1,200. Insurance paid $600 of it.
I'm surprised it paid that much. Typically, we see it less than that.
We got a $600 bill. So in that instance, it wouldn't have paid for the IMSA ride, but had she fallen in Yukon, and that $600 balance was there, then me being, us electing to take this option, or not opting out, I guess?
Correct.
Then that 600 would have been covered, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. So then, that goes to the next question. If we pay this in Yukon and get injured in Oklahoma City, this will not cover an IMSA ride?
No, sir.
Okay.
It, however, would cover you anywhere where we currently service, which now includes Tinkler Air Force Base, the City of Bethany, War Acres, and Yukon.
Okay.
If you happen to be in Stroud, it would cover you there as well.
Okay, I understand.
And even if you've met your deductible, you still would incur expenses with the ambulance ride, correct?
Again, it depends on the insurance and how the insurance is structured, and what we find out is, most people, when they're buying insurance, they don't really ask about ambulance coverage. They're much more concerned with, am I covered, you know, for major procedures and so forth and so on. And even having, like, for instance, a Blue Cross Blue Shield policy, depending on the policy, it could be widely variable what they pay. In some cases, there's no coverage for ambulance. So it's difficult to explain to people, and it's difficult for people to call their insurance company and really get a straight answer on what's covered with insurance, often. So our general recommendation is that typically, insurance will pay something, and if they don't pay anything, then they're still better off with the discounted price that we're giving, in addition to the opt-out and covering the copay. I think Mr. Crosby forgot to mention that, but we've discounted our rate substantially. So for example, if I may, I'm going to pull up my notes here. Our charge, our retail charge for an Advanced Life Support Level 1 last year was, if memory serves correctly, $1,300. And with the changes that we're recommending, that charge, that retail rate is now $671, or will be, $671.86. And the reason, it seems counterintuitive to decrease your rates, but the reality is, is that many of the people that are underinsured or uninsured simply do not have the means to pay for a $1,200 ambulance bill. And many that are insured don't have the means to do that. So our strategy is to reduce that to where it's a much more tenable situation for the individual patient, because if they're getting a bill from us, they're also getting bills from the hospital, and they think our bill is big, those are typically a lot bigger. But we're trying to create a structure where it's much more reasonable for the individual citizen regardless of what their circumstances are. Does that answer both questions?
It answers mine, and Donna, when Carla fell, it was in December, so we were at the end of the year, and we'd met our deductible, and that's, we have health choice, so we're on the state insurance, so that was a health choice.
Well, I had just had some discussion and heard discussion about that, and people thinking, well, you know, if you've met your deductible, you don't need it, but I didn't. I didn't personally think that, I just asked the question for everybody else.
Normally, I would say normally, it does not, if you met your deductible, it will still not cover the ambulance.
Right, I didn't think so, most of the time, yeah.
Typically. If they are opted in, then any expenses incurred here are covered, is that correct?
For medical necessity, medically necessary ambulances, that is correct, and that's the other key word, is we don't get to determine who's medically necessary, your insurance provider does. So if we get to your house, and you're having chest pain, and we believe that you need to be taken emergently to the hospital, and we do that, and we give you medications, your insurance company may still come back and say, we don't feel like that it was medically necessary. And the, a good example is Veterans Administration Insurance. They will not pay for an ambulance unless they order it. And if you're having chest pain, and you're on veterans insurance, and you call us to come pick you up, and we've dealt with several vets in the community that have had this situation, VA won't pay for it. Now, there's a tremendous amount of work going on industry-wide to get them to kind of change their practices, but that is a good example, and that would cover that.
But if they were a veteran in our community, and they were opted in because of their residence, then the house, then the bill would be covered.
That's correct.
The whole bill, or I thought they got an adjusted?
They'll get the adjusted bill, that's correct, sir. But it's still considerably less than what it would be otherwise. Okay.
Just make sure.
I have more.
Go ahead. Just make sure that the public didn't misunderstand something there. Your rate last year for that class of trip?
Mm-hmm.
$1,300, and it's $650 now, that's only if you're opted in.
No, no, that is, that is the total retail rate that we would apply to any citizen in, in the community.
Even if they're not.
Right, we're not, we're not allowed to carry more than one rate, we have to have one single rate.
Let's clarify that, second.
Yes, sir.
It's $650, that's your base rate, right?
That one was for, that I quoted was Advanced Life Support 1.
Right.
Yeah.
But if you give any medications or other things like that, or other charges that go with that?
There's, there's actually Basic Life Support Emergency, Basic Life Support Non-Emergency, ALS, which is.
Right.
Life Support 1, and 2, both Non-Emergency and Emergency, and then there's one called MICU, so there's actually seven of them.
Right, I understand that, I just want to clarify, but I mean, other charges can be incurred in that run.
Mileage, that's the only other charge. You can't bill for oxygen.
But there are other fees, levels of fees.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to clarify that, so everybody understands that.
Correct.
But the idea of reducing the rate was done because of the supplement that would be received from the city?
Yes.
Okay, so that leads me to my next question, anyone else before I ask my next question? So I was asked, how much money will this generate per month?
I can give you roughly the yearly cost difference.
Okay.
The yearly cost, we're subsidizing IMSA at the present time about $190, I mean, $192,000 a year, okay? This is a guess, depending upon how many opt-in, opt-out, and all that, this should raise a little over $300,000. If we take 12% off that for handling charges or whatever, you know, collecting the money, billing, and doing all the things we do, then we will take care of the, all these people signing up and handling, that would generate, let's say, it'd get, I think they'd get about $250,000 to $270,000 is what it would generate for Samaritan.
So there's not a set number, so whatever's collected, less 12%, will go to Samaritan?
That's exactly right, and people can opt-in, you know, in that period of the opt-out, we will know, and, you know, it depends on how many residents are, are residents, or are part of the system.
Okay, because the other question was, if there was money left over, what is the city going to do with it? There's not going to be any.
There's no money, it goes directly, whatever's there goes to IMSA.
Less a 12% operating.
Yeah, keep in track of everybody who's a member, everybody who's not a member, notification collection, paying the bills, doing all that, yes. And it changes monthly, too.
Sure. And then finally, so I talked to a couple of different people about the notice and how we're going to get this information out. One person pointed out to me that not everybody gets to see this broadcast, so for instance, we have AT&amp;T, we don't get to see the broadcast. Not everybody gets the progress, not everybody gets the Yukon Review, but everybody gets their water bill. So are we going to put something in the water bill?
We'll try, I'll put something in the water bill, but one of the things we're going to do, which I feel is the best way of communication, we have a flyer, and we're going to send people out, and they will tape it to your trash can, everybody's trash can. It'll be in the paper, it'll be in our webpage, it'll be everywhere, be on your water bill. Not everybody reads their water bill.
Agreed.
And so, we hopefully, by pasting ages, you know, eight-by-11 sheet, eight-and-a-half-by-11 sheet, on your trash can, everybody has a trash can out there, most people.
Agreed.
And we'll do that, but we'll put flyers at nursing homes everywhere we go, and notify everybody. We're going to do our best to do that.
Okay, I think that's all I had.
And then I have one other thing, so we talked about in one of our study sessions about apartment complexes and things, and you indicated that that was the landlord's responsibility to notify the tenants?
Yes, it is, but we will still do flyers and give them to every tenant that we can, and try to let everybody know. We found that in the past, that's our best way of communicating, is putting a flyer on the trash can for the general public, but a lot of people won't read them, they'll tear them off, and a lot of people don't read their water bill, and Facebook, and papers, but, you know, all you can try is, as many different places as possible.
Or not the landlord's also required to keep a list?
Right, they're required to keep a list, and, and we will know, and that's where it takes a lot of work to keep track of who opts in, because if everybody, if he says no, but the people in those apartment houses want to opt-in themselves, we've got to keep track of who's opt-in, who's out-out, if they move, who changes, that will go, every month it'll change.
I've got a question, I just, I heard you say something there, when IMSA was there, we was paying $192,000? I'm paying $200,000 for IMSA. I'm sorry? We're paying $200,000.
Paying $192,000 a year right now.
To Samaritan.
To Samaritan.
And there wasn't any collection coming in on that?
No, it's directly out of our pocket.
I, I question on, as bad as our people hate the water bills right now, should we maybe be putting that towards this payment? Where it's not as large a amount, since we've already been paying $192,000 a year?
What happens to the $192,000, Jim?
Well, it'll, it'll be in the general fund, and like I say, if it's just like our costs go up every year, and their costs go up every year, you're not, you know, and trying to figure out what the difference is, to try to get their funds to a different level, and, I mean, it can be done, but I mean, it's a council decision, I would recommend we just proceed as is, as other, this is what, this is the direction all towns go. I think, in fact, I think Bethany, there's not an opt-out.
Correct, there is no opt-out, everybody's mandatory.
And.
Edmond does as well.
Right, and I think Oklahoma City, with theirs, and Edmund and Norman both have this, don't they, with IMSA?
I believe so, yes.
Right.
Norman's with a different service, but I think it's similar structure.
A little different structure, but I mean, most towns don't even have an opt-out. It all goes on this type of thing, on the water bill.
But we're not paying, we're not paying them $192,000. Well, that's what, we have been paying $192,000. Yes, it's 264 that's going to be generated, okay? The $300, or $300,000. It's the citizens that's paying that in. 12%, that will be what's covering that, okay? But it's still money that's coming out of the City of Yukon, per se, you know, in the, in the fact that it's taxpayer money, is it correct, Jim? Well, it's, they're paying three-something a month. Yeah, $3 and something a month, three, what was it?
365.
365.
So that 365, instead of being a general fund, will be coming, and so we won't, that $192,000 will not be. And so we won't, that hundred and ninety-two thousand will not be on top of that or anything. It will be generated and become, well, self-funding in that regard.
So, is, that's about a sixty thousand dollar increase?
We es- we estimate, yeah.
Be close to sixty, at least, in my opinion. I'm just saying, you know, it could exceed that, and again, it could be less. I mean, I'm, I'm just giving you a guess, right?
Right.
What is your current, current financial situation? You know, when we had discussed this previously, you still had a tremendous amount of outstanding debt that had not been corrected as a result of the fees being thirteen, fourteen hundred dollars, uh, per ride, so.
Um, if memory serves, when I was with the council last time, our estimate was that there was about eight hundred thousand dollars that was still outstanding owed by citizens. Um, the, as of last week, I should say, uh, 'cause we obviously receive money every day, but, um, it was about four hundred thousand dollars. And we still believe, you know, typically it takes us about, about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty days to fully realize all accounts that we'll pay before we write them off. And that's just related to timeliness of insurance payments and, you know, uh, appeal processes and things like that. So we feel like we're narrowing that substantially. But we, you know, we believe that this is going to have a tremendous, uh.
But that should make the debt then in that.
Correct.
That sixty thousand should make a debt, that four hundred thousand that's outstanding. Is that, that's what you're doing? Questioning that. Oh, okay. It doesn't need it. I, I, I agree from what you're saying about not being able to collect. I know you all need it. But if we were doing a hundred and ninety-two thousand, I'm not sure that we shouldn't be putting that towards it now and taking some of the burden off of the public if that's what's been going on already.
But I, so I, that's struggling with that myself, but I think the difference here is, is that if we make the, give the citizens the option so they can opt out and go back to where they are now, but they get the benefit if they elect to do this, like in my instance, a six hundred dollar bill would have been covered. So they can go back, so they just, I guess the responsibility shifts over to the citizen. So the other way, it was on the citizen to opt in, and this is where they opt out. So the way it exists now, if they opt in, would it have been, would the ride have been covered like now? Under the, under the current contract, had a person elected to opt in, and like in my example, had it occurred in Yukon, would the six hundred have been covered?
Yes.
Okay.
For medic, and based on what you told me, that ambulance should have been medically necessary. So yes, for medically necessary rides.
Okay. How, how, what's the cost over in Bethany? Same, the same as here or?
No, they actually, their negotiated rate is two, I believe it's two sixty-five a month. That's basically the same situation that they had with IMSA, and for their perspective, it was easier, just much like we did with, we came in a little lower than IMSA's bid, but their, that city's a little bit different, has a little bit different payer mix, but, you know, they're two sixty-five per meter.
Yes, I, as I recollect, IMSA was forty-five dollars, and you came in at what, forty-four something?
Forty, forty-three eighty, I think, is the correct answer. Forty-three eighty. Mr. Alberts can correct my math later if it's wrong, but I believe that's correct.
So that's in, in essence, it's just going into their, the bill, rather than if they were paying it, they would have been paying forty-five at Edmund IMSA, so I would, it's not a different payment per se. It's that people are not opted in versus opted out, which will then. Like, I, I don't know what the one ninety, a hundred ninety-two thousand that we were paying to IMSA really wasn't to give the public, it was just for their service. Yes. If we were doing that and we're not having to do that now with this company, I'm not sure why we can't put that towards this.
They, they were doing it. It was, they did it to IMSA, it was about two hundred is what they said. Last year with Samaritan, it was a hundred and ninety-two. Is that right?
Uh, it is correct, sir. Uh, Councilor Russell, are you alluding to the fact that you were paying IMSA and there was no direct benefit to the citizen out-of-pocket expense-wise? That, okay, so that, that is correct. So when, when the city had the contract with IMSA and you were paying IMSA subsidy, the average citizen still had to get their own membership in order to essentially get the benefit of what kind of counselor Alberts and I have been discussing. Um, is that what you're alluding to?
Right. And even with you, they paid, we were paying a hundred and ninety-two thousand a year. But if you really wanted, you had to pay forty-three eighty.
That's correct.
Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
To have a yearly membership.
Right.
And we were paying a hundred ninety-two and these, and our citizens had no benefit except they had to buy a monthly deal. And, uh, you know, and, and I, I understand what you're saying. I just think, I probably think this is the best way to handling this and, you're not talking about that much money or, or changing three dollars and sixty-five cents a month. And, uh, I realize that's an increase in, in a water bill, but it's, it's, people will benefit from this.
Well, it's not an increase in the water bill, it's an increase in your.
Service bill, yeah.
And your monthly payment, but I mean, it will be attached to the water.
It's, it's collected through the same.
Water.
Yeah.
Uh, one more thing, and then I'm going to back out of this, but I, I'm not quite following, but the hundred ninety-two thousand was paid by the city.
Correct.
But that wasn't for, that wasn't for the discounted service. That was just paying the service to be here.
To have them here and have two ambulances in town, but we had one.
That wasn't, that wasn't, that's not with you all.
Your statement is correct.
No, no, it, it was with you.
It was with you.
Richard, yeah. They paid a hundred, we pay, how much is it a month, Jim?
We pay them sixteen thousand dollars a month, times twelve is a hundred ninety-two thousand.
So in March of twenty eighteen, they received sixteen thousand dollars for their service to be here. It was a supplement from the city of Yukon to supplement the service to be here in town. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Well, it depends on how this vote goes down. So, but the vote is to move that, to take that one ninety-two away and have the supplement come from the citizens at the suggested rate. Is that correct?
Right, with them having the benefit of not having to buy a membership.
Right.
They do not choose.
The fees coming from them, but in the old way, I think what had, had happened when you came and made the presentation, many people did not opt in and many people were being stuck, like with us, with IMSA with a six hundred dollar bill. And that's what you found is, is that in other areas where people opted in, they were more satisfied with the service at the end of the day because of the four dollar monthly charge covered the six hundred dollar ride that my wife had.
Correct.
So they were more, they were more happy with having to opt out than having to opt in. People didn't understand that they had to opt in because they thought that the city was providing an ambulance service, and then they were concerned by the fact that they got the six hundred dollar bill like we received.
Correct.
So this eliminate, would have eliminated, had Carla fallen here in Yukon, it would have eliminated the six hundred dollar bill.
I, I, I'm agreeing with that one hundred percent. I'm just saying there's no longer a fee coming from the city, it's coming from the public.
Right.
People opting in. I think also one of the things, there's a lot of people thought their insurance, their personal health insurance covered them. And in point of fact, that doesn't really turn out to be true. Because a lot of them don't, and then they don't know till they get a thirteen hundred dollar bill. It says, you know, and, and unfortunately, that really hurts the people who don't have the means. And this provides an opportunity to be economical enough for, so that we get a lot of people that don't wind up getting hurt if they really do need an ambulance. Because if you're busy having a heart attack, you're not really interested at that instant about what that fee is, but, you know, six weeks later, if you live, you, you do.
Correct. Well, and, and to me, what this is, is I don't know if it's as much about the individual as it is the community. I think this creates a layer of protection for the community in general. So it guarantees that we'll have a good quality ambulance service here. It provides a benefit to the majority of the public. So after sitting here and having this discussion back and forth, to me, I think it's more about the community as a whole. It's what, this is a good product that's providing and performing well here in our community, and we need to do this in order to keep them here and that's, that's what I've gotten out of our discussion.
Well, I'll make one other comment too, just from my part, is having two ambulances in town all of the time was far more critical when they were dispatching services to us from Oklahoma City. Which, you know, the average on, on-call response time was in excess of twenty minutes. Whereas now it's what, five minutes or six, you know, before, where we've got an ambulance with, with certified people on it, on-site within six or seven, six minutes approximately. Uh, as opposed to waiting for them to dispatch out of Oklahoma City and tying, tying up our resources as well. Not only mention our paramedics are on-site and they're waiting on them to show up twenty minutes later. So I think it's, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot more of that than it, than, than meets the eye. So I agree with John. I think it's a very important thing, quality of life issue for citizens of Yukon.
Well, I agree with that totally. I just can't quite wrap my arms around what they need this money, you all need this money, and it's a wonderful service. That's a hundred percent. I'm just not quite sold on how they're getting it.
Sure.
Just a point for clarification, your response time is how much in Yukon?
On average?
Yes.
Uh, as of this month, ninety-four point eight percent of the time, we are at eight minutes and thirty-one seconds.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Mike said six, I just wanted.
Hundred and thirty-one so far.
If someone doesn't show up in six minutes, I don't want you to get in trouble. It's about eight something, isn't it?
It, it actually.
I understand.
We have some months where it is.
I understand, but I heard you say eight before.
This month, it's eight minutes and thirty-one seconds, ninety-four percent of the time.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Vote please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
No.
Item five A, consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance one three five five. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Vote please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Russell?
No.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes. Item six, approving, consider approving resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero four, a resolution declaring and setting fees relating to the city of Yukon Code of Ordinances, section appendix B, section four dot oh three, two oh four dash one ten, two oh four dash sixty-nine, two zero four dash ninety-five, two zero four dash one zero eight, two one three dash forty-six, two zero four dash seventy, two zero four dash ninety-two, two dash, two oh four dash one eleven, two zero four dash one three six, eighteen dash thirty-one, eighteen dash one one five, two one zero dash five, two one three dash eleven, two one three dash four six, two one three dash four nine, nine four dash seven three, appendix A, section six zero five dash seven, section seven oh one dot five, section eight oh three dot one, section nine zero one dot two, and establishing fees for zoning clearance letters, map reproduction, and publication and mailing, and providing for an effective date. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
Jim, will you give us a little explanation?
Yeah, I was going to call on Mr. Horton there to.
I believe this is your first re-codification.
Councilman Alberts, uh, basically when we codified the ordinance, if you'll notice, the section numbers changed, the chapters changed. So we had to reassign the section numbers or the reference numbers for those fees. That's part of what we've done, and also we clarified some fees or adjusted some fees as needed. And in your packet, we underlined what was new and struck through what was removed. Uh, basically, that's what we did. Uh, we did subtract three-inch and four-inch water meters because that's a, something that normally, we don't hold that cost. We don't know what that cost is until we need one. We don't do them every day. So we just, uh, actually did cost plus ten percent on those odd things that we don't do all the time. So, uh, we did add a fee for a, uh, a floodplain uh, letter that may be needed, because we do have to do those sometimes, so we have some kind of administrative cost to recover. So we can kind of spread that out. But that's the most of it. There is a couple other little fees.
Thank you, sir.
Last time we had changes along this line, it was two thousand thirteen, is that correct?
Uh, I think that's right. This is basically replacing those fees.
Okay, and do you know what the increase was? I noticed quite a few of the individual items changed.
Uh, section numbers mainly changed. Uh, there wasn't a lot of fee changes in there. There was a couple, but not a lot.
Okay, and these came to us from?
These, these were caused by, uh, we had the, we re-codified our codebook, changed section numbers, chapters. So we went in there and adjusted what needed to be adjusted by section number, and there was a couple of fees that needed to be adjusted or re- clarified. And there was some fees that were left out with the qualification that was actually still in the codebook from the old one to the new one, so some of those fees are that as well.
Somebody was awfully busy.
It was a lot of work, a lot of work. We had to compare the old codebook with the new one, so.
So basically, we're just saying it's been five years. We went through and, and re-codified the book. Is that a requirement every five years?
Ten years, ten years, sir. Every ten years.
Okay. Okay. Uh, any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Horton. Vote please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item seven, consider approving resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero five, a resolution declaring and setting fees relating to the city of Yukon Code of Ordinances, section six dash one oh seven, six dash one seventy-two, and establishing fees for alcoholic beverages and low-point beer for an effective date. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
A motion and second. Uh, Mr. Horton, I noticed you didn't even go to the back.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This, this is, uh, something, uh, when we codified the codebook, we did not realize with the codification, uh, they removed all these fees. So we are putting the fees back as a resolution for right now. Uh, these are the exact fees that was in the original codebook before the codification. Uh, we will be coming to see you in the fall, uh, to adjust these fees because there's some state statutes that's changing about the six-point beer and how we will address that, so.
Does this also cover when they start selling beer in, in grocery stores?
This really does not. This is put our fees back in. We still are dealing with that. We're waiting to see what the state statutes actually come out in the rulemaking. Uh, we've been working with Oklahoma City and some other cities to see how we're going to address those changes and how the rules are going to affect us.
So we should anticipate another change in the?
Yes, that later after summer, we should have you an ordinance to review with fees that will address the, uh, the six-point beer being served in, uh, quick stops and so forth. Grocery stores and wine.
Talk to me, any other? Talk to me. Any other discussion? John? Okay, thank you, Mr. Horton. Vote please.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Item eight, consider authorizing the expenditures of funds not to exceed twenty-four thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents for drainage repair at eighteen oh one Wagner Road to be paid to Brewer Construction Oklahoma LLC as a part of the two thousand seventeen concrete and asphalt paving drainage, water, and sewer project contract as recommended by the Public Works Director. Uh, do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Adams, I, I, we use a specific address.
This, this is a, this is a drainage deal that a tin horn had been placed there in our drainage ditch that is on the north side of Wagner Road. It has collapsed in areas, and we're going to have to go in there. We're going to put a concrete box to replace that to small.
So this is actually right in the drainage ditch itself then?
This is in the drainage ditch, in a drive in, in an area there that belongs to the city. We'd put this in years back. It has failed, and we want to replace it.
Okay. So this is, that was what I was checking to see that it was ours and?
We put the exact dri, drive, so you would know exactly the location, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Vote please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Item nine, consider entering into a utility cost reduction agreement and letter of authorization to deal with Utility Companies with Utility Rebate Consultants, Inc., for a review and possible cost savings for the city of Yukon's gas and electric bill. I think, Mr. Crosby, I, like, you know, that's, we're just hiring somebody to come out here and?
They take your utility bills and see and try to combine them and find you a cheaper rate if you can from another company. And usually, it's pretty good savings. We've done this in the past, and our staff has recommended that we go forward with this in the future. At, you would think?
I'm, I'm sorry, did I get a motion in a second?
You did not.
I did. I need to get a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Now, is there any further discussion? Okay. So we don't think, I guess from?
You don't address it?
Well, I don't think there's any.
Yep. Go ahead.
This, this is not one of my items. Uh, I think Cheryl's, this is one of Cheryl's items, if I remember right. So Cheryl could address the questions on this item.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, this is just an agreement for this company to access our accounts with our, with the utilities, ONG and OGENE, to see if there's some meter reduction costs, uh, fee costs that, that they could find some reduction in, uh, for us. And this agreement allows that they would receive, if they save us any money, that they would receive fifty percent of that, and that we would receive fifty percent. Uh, there's no guarantee of, of anything, that they would find anything, but if they do, then it's just a surplus for the city.
So they wouldn't be just looking into billing per se, they'd be looking into meter reading and other things that they charge us for?
Yes.
Because I mean, I'm, we don't have a one electric and gas company that I know of. So there, I mean, we can't find anybody new, I don't think.
Well, um, we do have, um, we utilize Clearwater, uh, for gas service as well.
Okay.
Um, so they could recommend that, you know, we, we go with more accounts. We only have two accounts with Clearwater right now. They could recommend that we go with more accounts, um, just as a cost-saving measure.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Any other discussion? Vote please.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Item ten, consider approving the purchase of a two thousand eighteen Chevrolet Silverado C twenty-five hundred crew cab in the amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand one hundred and twelve dollars to be paid from the sales tax capital improvement fund for the Public Works Department on state contract S W zero three five as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item eleven, consider approving the bid with A R C Pyrotechnics, Inc., to perform two firework shows on July the third and July the fourth for a total cost of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars as recommended by the city manager. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Any new business this evening, Mr. Shepard?
None tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Council discussion, Councilwoman Yanda?
Well, I just want to say during our study session, we received an update on our deposit accounts, and it's encouraging to see that these accounts are up substantially. So things are looking good for the city of Yukon. Thank you.
Councilwoman Smystrela?
I have nothing to say today.
Thank you. Councilwoman Russell?
I'd just like to thank everybody for tuning in and listening.
Councilman Alberts?
Tonight, I'd like to, uh, thank the people that work here in our community, that, at the community center, the Jackie Cooper Gym, all the different fields. It's springtime, the kids are out there ordering to play soccer and run around, have some baseball and different sports. And it's just amazing that all the different volunteers, some people are paid, but I, I appreciate those people too. They've got great attitudes. It's a great community to have a kid and, and for a kid to be involved. And, um, we talked a minute ago and voted on a deal about the BMX. And I think it was, I don't know, Jim, ten, fifteen years ago when the BMX came here and talked about building the deal, and we even helped support the funding of the, the track and everything through Yukon National Bank. And I mean, they kind of laid the groundwork for the, the little R C track. I mean, Southwest Covenant Schools, now the Spirit League's out there, Taylor Park has really boomed. So when you look way back to the BMX track and them coming here and saying, look, I promise we'll pay this back if you'll cosign for us a note at Y and B. I mean, so a shout out to BMX for given, for them having the courage and giving us the courage to back them. And then that park really grown and doing well. So that's all I have. Thanks to all those people involved.
Uh, just a short comment. Uh, Yukon Birthday Bash has just passed. Did well, I think. And, uh, uh, this next Thursday, uh, yeah, Thursday, March the twenty-second, is the nineteenth annual Taste of Yukon at the Dale Robertson Center. Uh, ticket is from five thirty to seven thirty P M. And tickets are fifteen dollars in advance, seventeen dollars on the day. There will be over twenty food vendors there with a wide variety of things. And of course, as always, check out the Chocolate Corner, uh, sponsored by Friends of the Park and Strawberry Cake Crepes, put together by the Mobile Meals. April the sixth through the fourteenth, which is something I think is very special for Yukon, which is the Yukon Senior Games. Uh, various park and metro locations, Olympic-style games are open to all individuals over fifty. Uh, events include creative arts, bowling, archery, horseshoes, weightlifting, track and field. It's something really special for our seniors and another part of the quality of life thing that we have here in Yukon. And last Saturday, May the fifth, the Festival of the Child at Yukon City Park, ten A M. to four P M. The cost is five dollars, and it will be seven dollars a day of, so save yourself a couple of dollars. Uh, the bonus is it's free for adults, so only the kids get charged for it. And, uh, come and celebrate with your children. A full day of, of fun made really just for them. So with that, seeing no other business before the council tonight, we are adjourned.